Two items, one is we need to add an executive session. So I'll just go ahead and move it to amend the agenda to add an executive session. The purpose will be to receive legal advice where the advice relates to potential claims covered under attorney-client privilege, and it relates to M.C. Riley Road. And secondly, if there's no objection, I may use a little bit of judgment to take one or two items out of sequence just because we may start to run out of time. So in the interest of time. So I do need a motion, first of all, to approve the executive committee item, and it does require a two-thirds vote.
I'll make the motion.
Executive session, and it's for the M.C. Riley Pool in Bluffton, not Road.
Oh, M.C. Riley Pool, not Road, I'm sorry. Okay.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, with those amendments.
Okay. Second? Is there any objection to either one of those? If not, I assume we'll have the two-thirds, and so without objection, we will approve the agenda as highlighted. Are there any public comments, Sarah or Tiffany, that you're aware of?
We didn't approve the minutes.
Now, you just made a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Yeah, we have to approve the agenda. Okay, I was just seeing if you all were paying attention.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. The second?
No second.
Okay, without objection, approved. Other item is our minutes from January 18th. Look for a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Is there any, I need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any objection to that? If not, they're approved without objection. Jared, it's your turn. Always good to have you with us, sir.
Yes, sir.
Did you have a good time up in the mountains?
Yes, indeed.
Get some snow?
Cold, a little bit, but thankful for the eight degrees this week. All right, so thank you, Chairman Rodman and committee. So as usual, I'd share a few things that don't always make it to the agenda, either stuff that's in the works or stuff that just in general good knowledge to know. So starting with transportation, I apologize, I'm not trying to be fair to transportation, just happens to be a lot of transportation stuff going on today. So 278 corridor project, we will be hosting with DOT a public information meeting for Thursday, March 3rd to 20, uh, March 3rd from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Island Rec Center on Hilton Head. This will be a meeting to demonstrate the feedback and modifications to the preferred alternative. The meeting materials will be available online starting March, or excuse me, February 24th for 30 days. So 30 days will be open comments, including the public hearing, or public information meeting there on March 3rd. So look forward to that meeting. There's been a lot of good changes and updates and feedback from the public hearing in July, so this will be presenting those updates. 170 near-term project, you had asked that we touch base with the design engineer, but due to the schedule of the day, thought maybe I'd just update myself. So full design is underway for the near-term projects, is on schedule, and our goal is to have the projects ready to go out to bid by early summer, so June or July timeframe. AECOM is currently working on a study for the left turn signal there at TideWatch, so they're working on that and coordinating with DOT. And concurrently, just south of us, not part of this project, but Town of Bluffton's working on a turn lane or a signal analysis at Bell Whip Boulevard intersection. About a week and a half ago, I presented to Town of Hardyville, they had a workshop meeting and invited us to talk about 170 and the near-term project. It was well received, they appreciated the input and what we're doing so far, and will be taking up the IGA for their portion towards the near-term project here shortly. Additionally, we have also kicked off a study on 278, a corridor study much like we already have on 170, and Town of Hardyville has on Argent Boulevard, so this will be from 170 to Argent Boulevard along 278. And what that'll do, that'll give us a study for each of the three components of what we refer to as the Triangle Project. So that is underway as well. And lastly, in transportation, last week, we had a CTC yearly meeting with DOT. It went really, really great, and the main event was the five-year resurfacing update. So five years ago, or 2017, we established a five-year paving plan. Out of that five-year paving plan, we did an assessment of all our roads and the condition, and then said, okay, over the next five years, we're going to implement these projects with the spending amount that we have allocated from CTC. Over the five years, we've had some improvements, so now we're looking to start the next five years. We coordinated with the same consultant, they've helped us assess the roads again, a new survey, and a new plan for years six through 10. But in the report, they pointed out some highlights, and I'd like to share those with you real quick. So out of our complete system, all the county roads that we own and maintain, the improvements, the overall rating and condition went up by 6%. Doesn't sound like a lot, but trust me, it gets a little bit better. The treated roads, so roads that we only treated, not considering the ones that we didn't treat, went up by 16%, so the condition went up immensely. And lastly, in 2017, we have a scale, basically kind of like five, zero through five, like a very good, good, satisfactorily poor and very poor. We didn't have any very good roads in 2017. And as of the last five years, all the improvements that we made, our four years, now we have 67.3 miles that are in very good condition, which is three, 33% of our 208 miles. So in just five years, with about $2.5 million per year, that's the ton of impact that we've made on our county paved roads. So really excited about that and see where the next five years will take us. Capital project, so EMS fire station at Sun City, the one Pope Avenue just outside the gate, that is under construction, the contractors recently mobilized, and they are still on schedule for the completion of that upgraded center at the end of this year. In solid waste and recycling, we hosted an E-Waste Day on February 12th. It was greatly received by public, we had over 1,100 people that showed up and brought their recycling electronics. We collected over four semi-truck trailer loads and four, or two box trucks of waste, all that was diverted from the landfill. So it's a quarterly event, this was probably one of the best ones we've had so far. Also, upcoming is Earth Day. So Earth Day is April 22nd, we'll be celebrating it at our county staff on April 20th, which is a Wednesday when our, when our centers are closed. And in doing so, we'll be doing a countywide litter cleanup, we've done in previous years. Last year was a little slim due to COVID, so we're going to pour some gasoline back on that and really amp it up. It'll be countywide, council members, you guys are invited, we've had council members in the past. The event will be from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We'll be reaching all parts of each of the 11 districts. Planning's underway, and more details will follow on that, but go ahead and put in your calendars for April 20th. And lastly is broadband. So broadband is something that's highly important to us, something that's been in our ARPA appropriations. It's really not, we don't have that much money in ARPA towards broadband, but the reasoning is because there was a lot of funding count coming down the pipe, and I just got word last week about that funding opportunity. So last week, had a really good conversation with the state broadband office, the state official. They are continuing to fine-tune their maps, so they basically have assessed of all the areas of underserved areas that are less than 25 and 3, so that's the standard, 25 megabits per second download and 3 megabits per second upload. So anybody less than that, they have that identified so they can target funds. So they just recently updated their maps in January, and all those maps can be downloaded to the general public from www.scdigitaldrive.org. On the website there, they have a I Need Survey, I Need Internet Survey. So if you do not have the internet or something less than 25 and 3, that is the place you go make it known so the state can update their, their data and their maps. And that, so this is the most critical point that all of us need to let all of our citizens know in our corresponding areas. Those maps are going to be continually updated, and the next round of funding, last year, there was a smaller round of $30 million of funding, this year, I don't know the dollar amount, but it's coming into April, which will be, last year was open just to underserved counties, which was Jasper, we happened to participate because we were contiguous, but this will be to all counties statewide. And those maps that, or the monies that will be appropriated in that timeframe will be based off the maps at the end of February. So we have until now, until February, if you know somebody that doesn't have internet, they need to go on that survey link. And I'll send this all out in a website or in an email, so you guys can have it and forward it on as well. We've also coordinated with the school district on that to see if they've had a way to send this out to parents, and they are acting on that as well. So they're getting all the information out to the public, and anybody that you run into, please direct them to that survey. So that is all I have as far as updates besides the stuff that's on the agenda, but would love to take any questions.
Comments or questions for Jared?
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
There's a, you know, if you want to find out what the speed is in your own house, you go to Ookla, download the speed test, and you can test your device to see what kind of speed you have in your house. You can do it on your phone, do it on your computer, it is a free app.
Absolutely, and that's the information where the state is pulling from is Ookla. On that, if you're at your phone, make sure you do it and you're connected to the Wi-Fi, because you want to test the internet at the house, not the internet on your phone. Those are similar but different, so, but good point.
Jared, would you send us both of those websites?
I will, absolutely.
Thank you. York?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, dirt roads. One, did the state indicate that they will try to do what they can to increase funding for dirt roads? And two, what's the percentage of dirt roads that have been completed or need to be completed? And if you can.
So dirt roads, the state owns about a micro fraction of dirt roads. Most of the dirt roads are locally owned or private, so they don't really have any funding that would be coming forth towards dirt road pavement.
Oh, really?
Yep. So most of those roads are, like I said, county or private. Of county roads, I don't have the exact number, I probably do in my book somewhere. 77.62 miles of pair roads.
Left?
Left.
You're sure about the 62?
That's correct. Plus or minus a point of decimal.
Anybody online, I can't necessarily see everybody.
Jared, this is Gerald.
Bill, go.
Yes, sir.
At the rate we're going as far as paving the dirt roads, with the remaining dirt roads that we have, the amount of miles that we have unpaved, what is the forecast for completion of having all the dirt roads in the county paved?
Maintaining this, the current rate, we're about 37 years from having all the dirt roads paved.
37 years?
Sorry.
You're serious?
No, he's not.
Unfortunately, I am serious in that response.
This is one of the things I might add to those of you in the rural areas that you might want to consider doing. One of the, this would be a great one sales tax project for us to add some of those unpaved county roads to the transportation referendum for 2022, so that you all can knock a big chunk, if not all of those, out of the way, so long as people are willing to donate the right of way for us to pave those roads. I think that would be a great thing for the rural portions of the county.
Thank you, Eric. I've already, I've already asked out of my, my representative on the transportation committee.
You can't do them all, so what's, what's, what would be a good number to put out there? Because right now, I've been told that a mile is about seven, about a million dollars a mile.
That's right.
So, yeah.
So rather than actually list roads, what we have and what I would propose and we can talk about, I'll definitely, I'll be involved with the Transportation Citizens Committee, is right now, we have, similar to paving, resurfacing, we have a index that we, we'll make sure, we'll update that index and say, okay, this is how we're evaluating roads, how many people live on it, how many businesses, does a church, cemetery, all, whatever's important, and then rank the roads on that index, and then work down that list. So that's what we're working down currently with, we're in year three of a five-year paving plan. And then next year, we're going to reevaluate, do a similar assessment like we did on the paved roads. If we need to modify that index, we certainly can at that time, and then basically rack and stack the roads as they're falling that letter of priority.
Now, this new ranking system for new, I mean, for upcoming paved roads, six to 10 years, it doesn't drop anybody that's on there now for one to five years, huh?
No, so the six to 10 one, that's, what we're doing right now, that's paved roads, that's not dirt roads. So the dirt roads is still the same, we're still in a five-year plan, we haven't done any changes yet to that five-year plan, but we haven't bumped anybody or anything, we're marching down the avenue.
Okay. Jared, thank you, good update as always.
All right.
John Rebel. John's going to bring us up to date on the airport, and I would ask that we take items eight, nine, and then 14 and 15, because they're all airport-related, and if we don't have an objection, we may vote on them all at one time, but tell us about the four, John.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Good afternoon. Even though it's kind of the slow tourist season, still a lot going on at the airport so we can get ready for next season. The first item that you've got in front of you is the recommendation, seeking recommendation to apply for a grant through the USDOT, it's called a Small Community Air Service Development Program Grant, so the SCASDP program short. And that's a program that's been going on just about every year, if not every year, since 2002. And what it does, it enables smaller communities, we qualify as a small community, to apply for these monies to be used either for revenue guarantees, to attract new airlines to an airport, or for marketing purposes, to market new service. Our service is still new, and so we still need to build awareness and market that service in those inbound cities such as Washington, New York, Philadelphia, and that kind of city. So what we're applying for is 500,000, it'll end up between 450 and 500,000 dollars. The airport share, that's only about 25,000. And then we work through the Hilton Head Island Bluffton Chamber of Commerce to develop a stakeholder group and a contributor group of the resort businesses and other businesses who are, who are tourism-related, who pledge funds to support this. One of the key decision-making criteria for DOT is to see the level of community involvement and supporting this. So in essence, it's a community grant that's basically administered via the airport, so that's what we're looking to apply for.
Any questions for John on that one? Okay, next one?
All right, the second one is a work authorization, it's actually an amendment to an existing work authorization where our airport consultants, Talbot, Bright, and Ellington are working with, or they have a subconsultant on the team, Newton and Associates, who are airport financial specialists, and what they'll be doing for us is working with the terminal project and the finances involved in order to put together the agreements, the negotiations that we'll conduct with the airlines. As you may recall, during the council retreat in early November, we had our consultants here, and they talked about how that's normal in the industry. When you build a terminal, when you renovate a terminal, the airlines are key stakeholders, not only from the ideas and concept standpoint, but also the financial standpoint. So that's what this does, it provides for those financial consulting services.
Questions for John on that one? Just one comment in the write-up, it said that we'd probably only use 20,000 in this current fiscal year, but I assume if you have to go up a little bit, that's within yours and Eric's discretion within that.
It's still within the budget we have available, we're just trying to read the deal.
So it's just, it's just information, okay.
Sure.
Questions, anybody online? Okay, tell us about number 14, sounds like a good one.
14 to 15, all you have to do is nod your head and say yes, if you'd like just over $2 million coming into the airports, and those are the ARPA grants. So we applied for those back in the fall, if you may recall, we came to you for permission on that, and now we've been granted those funds, we just need the permission to accept those funds. So at Hilton Head Island Airport, there's actually, there's actually two funds, or two, two grants, one is strictly for the airport, and then there's a smaller one that is to be used for concessionaires relief. So that together makes up the 1.995 million, and then at Beaufort Executive, which is item 15, very, very similar, the only difference is that it's a smaller amount because it's a general aviation airport, and that's a $32,000 one-time amount.
Okay. Any question for John on these two items? Okay. Any objection to any of these four items that John has talked about?
I will make the motion for items eight, nine, 14, and 15.
Second?
No second.
Second by Alice. Any objections? Seeing no objections, they're approved, you can go back to work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Before you leave.
Sure.
John, you gonna be around for a minute, or you gonna leave, walk out?
I can stick around, or I can answer questions?
No, no, no. I can walk out now.
I'll be happy to talk with you.
Sir.
I'll be happy to speak with you, sure.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll walk out with you.
Okay.
Yeah, when you start walking out, I'll walk.
Okay. Okay. Next item is number 10, it's part of resurfacing. Jared, you're up again, I think.
Yep, so item 10, this is back to resurfacing paved roads, not dirt roads. So this is year five, as mentioned, we just did the study for year six for then, so this is finishing up our first year, our first study. Year five, this is to APAC Atlanta. We went out to bid with this, we actually only received one submission on this, however, it did compare to our engineer's estimate, and also we have a level of confidence with the bidder, they've actually been the winning bidder, I think, in three out of the last four years. So we felt that it was a competent bid, or competent bidder, and a, and a good bid. So the bid came in at two, just a little over 2 million, 2.2 million dollars, and when we add contingency and our full-depth patching allowance, as well as some additional repairs, we planned for one of the roads, Gothie Road, the total comes to a contract award amount of, or a contract approval amount of $2,492,052. So this would be paid for out of CTC funds and was previously approved at their January 19th meeting.
Okay. Motion on this one?
I'll make a move.
York, second. Joe, okay. I think I'd also comment, it did strike me that when you had that retreat, that the things that the CTC and Craig Gordon and you were doing are really kind of setting a pace for the rest of the state, and I think you all are doing a super job.
Thank you.
So we're going, if we're at the fifth year of five, that means we come, come back for the next five before too long?
Yep, so like I said, we just did the study, so now we've got a plan for year six through 10, so without missing a beat, we'll just pick it up next year and start on that.
Okay. Any, any discussion on this? Pretty straightforward, we've talked about it. Any objections? Seeing no objections, this is approved without objection. That takes us to number 11, Burnt Church.
So number 11 is Burnt Church roadway design improvements. So this is, the where this came about, is this actually is a project that was listed on 2018 sales tax as a pathway, and actually one of the highest-ranked pathways out of the, out of the program. However, on the books as well was a, was roadway improvements, expansions of Bluffton Parkway. So this is the section of Burnt Church from Bluffton Parkway South to Aljoy. So from Bluffton Parkway North to 278 is already improved and is a five-lane section with sidewalks on both sides, and this would be carrying some type of improvement down from Bluffton Parkway to Aljoy. So it's approximately 1.3 miles, and it also would tie into the Bridge Street pathway that the Town of Bluffton has, so we'd make sure that we not only widen the road as needed and improve the intersection at Bruin, Bruin Parkway or Bruin Street, then we'd also connect the pathway at Bluff, at Bluffton Parkway, there's a lot of Bs in Bluffton, at Bluffton Parkway, along Burnt Church, and tied into Bridge, all three Bs. So anyhow, this would be for the design services only. We had 10 submissions, so a lot of interest from the engineering community on this. We had two Beaufort County staff and one town, Town of Bluffton staff, and after all the submittals were reviewed, the highest-ranked, um, most qualified was Parish and Partners LLC as the most qualified firm. So we negotiated a fee with them, their fee came in less than the engineer's estimate of 1.5, their fee totaled 1,411,333.91. This would be paid out of Bluffton, um, road impact fees, so out of the existing impact fees that we have in place, with a balance there of a little over 4 million. So staff's recommendation is to award this contract to Parish and Partners.
Okay, motion?
So moved.
Joe motion, second?
Second.
Second, Paul. Any, uh, any discussion on this? Again, anybody offline? Uh, any objections to this one? Okay, without objection, number 11 is approved. That takes us to a, a good one to talk about, number 12.
Yes, absolutely, it's always good having more money than you planned on. So this is, uh, the discussion, and, and I have it as a discussion for a reason, I'll explain, is discussion of allocating the extra cents, extra, um, monies that were, that were received as part of the 2018 collection. So the 2018 was for 120 million dollars, we recognized in October before the fourth quarter started, that we were near that at almost 119 million dollars, however, um, in coordination with the Treasury or the Department of Revenue, that you can't just turn it off automatically, we had to wait till the end of the quarter. So, however, uh, interestingly enough, normally we get a report from them, uh, 30 days after the quarter closes, but for some reason, we have not received that report yet. So, uh, we just have it listed as discussion because we still don't know that final dollar amount, we expect somewhere between the 12 to 14 million dollar, uh, surplus is what we're expecting, but we don't have a exact dollar figure. However, we'd like to talk that out with you guys, and from a staff's perspective, um, our thoughts would be that we could put those extra funds towards the pathways, we know we have more pathways than we have money, um, and to put that money towards that, for all those projects, um, that we have there. So that's, that's where we are, again, don't have it as an action item, I guess it could be an action item, um, but we just don't have the dollar figure to finalize a resolution.
Well, I think this will be a good discussion that we all want to want to think about. My, my understanding would be that we'd be limited to basically the three items that are on the referendum, which would be the 278 corridor, the Ladies Island, and the pathways, and they go forward. So, uh, questions and comments on this one, because I think this is one, I, I do assume that we'll have to, uh, go through, uh, three readings since we're appropriating money.
Jared, this is Gerald.
Gerald, what you got?
Yeah, um, Jared, to your point, I, I think, um, your suggestion of using the additional funds for the completion of the, um, pathways, if, if you remember, um, each council member that submitted, uh, projects, we had a first priority and a second priority, and so, uh, the, the first allocation from the once-entire sale tax are taking care of our first priorities. And so this additional funds, as you said, would, would go to, uh, complete the, the second, uh, priorities, uh, on the pathways. And I think that, that would go a long ways in showing, uh, the, the public that we are, we are actually living up to our, our promise of asking them to support that 2018 sales tax, and then that would, that would prompt them to give us their support for the sale tax that we're coming up with in 2022. So I, I, I think that's great.
I, I would concur.
Okay, other comments?
Well, I just have one that council probably would want to think about or make a decision on, uh, before we get into this, uh, discussion heavily. We do expect, based on the recommendations coming from MKSK out of the town of Hilton Head Island, that there will be some more, uh, cost associated with 278. Uh, you all may want to consider, uh, using some of this, uh, remaining funds to assist with some of those recommendations, MKSK, otherwise we'll have no revenue source to do that.
Yeah.
Uh, and, um, you all do have the option of basically saying that anything in that recommendation needs to be funded by the town of Hilton Head Island as well, but that would be another possible use for funds, so.
And probably a third use is, is Ladies Island. I think that all the projects could use some, some type of funding, um, but that was the whole point of this, is just to bring it up for discussion purposes.
Yeah. I, I think Gerald raises a good point, and I, I've always believed, and I think I've said this many times, is that, uh, we overlisted the number of projects on the pathways, so I, to some extent, being sensitive to that, I think will be important to bringing the, uh, the next referendum discussion along. Uh, but, uh, Eric's point is very valid, too, we may need to find some money, uh, and it may be enough to do both, so. Um, so I guess my assumption is that we would, staff would probably come back with some firmer recommendations, once you got some dollar amounts, and we ought to all weigh in if we, if we see something that we're overlooking, or something that's a priority within those three for dollars.
That's right, yeah, if there's any specific recommendations from, from council, we can put that into what we come back to as a formal recommendation.
Brian, did I see your hand?
Yeah, you did, sir, and I, I appreciate you calling on me. What I have to say is a little bit repetitive and redundant, but, um, I, I also agree with you that sidewalk should be a priority for any of the, uh, leftover funds, I don't know how we would really, extra funds that we have collected in, in that account, because the pathways are the ones that will impact the most number of citizens who vote on this. Yes, the bridge is important, but first of all, it's a, it's a state road, so it's, you know, primarily a state obligation. And the Ladies Island thing, only a small part of the community, I, I can't say a small part, but only a part of the community sees that, uh, those intersections and those improvements every day. So I think sidewalks really should be our biggest priority. Thank you.
Okay. We'll look for you to bring this back after you have some more definite recommendations, if that's okay, Eric, that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item number 13, our sustainability campus sighting study.
Yep, so I'm going to tee this up for Cindy Carter, um, but basically, this is something that we've been talking about for a while, um, we got a consultant to help us take a look at some of the properties that we own and gave them some specific parameters, and she'll talk through that and tell you where, what came of that study. Um, this again is for information-only and discussion purposes as well, so Cindy?
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, Weston and Sampson Consulting was, uh, utilized to evaluate properties in Beaufort County that might be suitable for a sustainable campus. Uh, the initial criteria included, the property needed to be available and suited for mixed-use waste management, uh, the property should be located south of the Broad due to its significant population and waste generation, uh, properties hopefully would have 50-plus acres, and the properties would have suitable soils. Um, as a reminder, mixed-use waste management sites could include, uh, a material recycling facility, or what we call a MRF, uh, a solid waste transfer facility for either MSW and/or us, construction and demolition material. Uh, it could also house yard and/or food waste composting, um, and we definitely like a collection campus to, uh, get the landfill banned items, such as the tires, the electronic waste that Jared mentioned earlier, and our household hazardous waste items. So of the report, 15 parcels were identified, and four, um, geographic cluster groups are in the report. Um, since that reported in September of 2021, uh, we continued the internal review of these parcels, and we've continued to visit other MRF operations in the area. Uh, just last week, we visited the MRF in Charleston County, uh, and also a MRF operating in Milledgeville, Georgia. So the Weston and Sampson study is consistent with our solid waste management goals and visions, uh, we've recently included the possibility of not putting all the proposed solid waste management facilities on one campus, and will consider current Beaufort County locations that could house any of the much-needed waste handling operations moving forward. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Give us a little bit of an idea what you think the timeline is, uh, is to bring this to resolution for us, if you could? Just a gentleman.
I would like, I'd like to have something in process by 2023.
Okay.
I'll add a little on that, too, so timeline is, I think the biggest thing that we've learned through this exercise, and more recently, um, taking a look at Charleston, is that it may not be, uh, the most easiest thing to do to house everything in one location. So I think, uh, looking at multiple locations is probably going to be the most feasible, and, um, that's also going to be the quickest to, to find sites that we can do one portion of that campus in, in certain areas, so.
Generally, the, each of those is delivered by different trucks anyway, is that true?
They're, that's right, it's, it's all, um, solid waste, but they have different components and different amounts of waste and, and truck traffic, so, um, they, that's another reason why separating kind of seems to make sense.
Okay.
And this study focused on county-owned properties, so we don't have to go out and buy a facility?
That's correct, that's right. And one thing we've also done, too, is we've, since this report was finished in September, we've been holding on to it a while to share it, just because we continue to do some research internally. We've also talked with Jasper County, um, and, and opportunities to coordinate together our, our land. Nothing really, again, once we're trying to fit it all in one space has been a little cumbersome, so I think we're back to the point where, you know what, still looking at places that we own and maintain so we can control, uh, but a, a quicker timeline if we separate some of the functions.
If I might, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Brian?
Just, I'm disappointed that rural and critical lands properties were considered as part of this, I don't, I don't think that's going to fly. Um, it's a conflict that puts us in, um, real jeopardy with not only the voters, probably our bond, um, requirements as well. Um, I, I don't think they should even be considered, quite frankly.
Okay.
Quick question, um.
Is there a York?
All the sites that you have listed here, um, is infrastructure a major issue for any one of them? Or the?
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't a criteria that we looked at, but it is a very important criteria, um, some, so there's not a lot of infrastructure needs as far as water and sewer, um, like you would in a manufacturing facility, the biggest is power. So depending on what type of use we have, power would be a bigger issue, um, and I believe all these parcels are off a major highway.
Okay.
Um, so power, the relatively, is pretty accessible, so.
Okay, thanks. Okay, well, we look forward to, uh, next steps on that one.
And while Cindy's on board, I might defer to her for the next three, uh, since she's right there to talk about the, the grants that she has accepted, or, uh, has looked to accept and looked to apply for.
Okay, Cindy, you're still on?
I am, uh, we have been granted the 2022 Palmetto Pride litter prevention grant, and the 2022 Palmetto Keep South Carolina Beautiful affiliate support grant, um, so we're looking for a resolution, uh, to accept those monies.
What, what, what's, what kind of money is involved?
Uh, each one were 5,000.
Each 5,000, okay. And tell us about number 18, then? Or, did you already do that one?
Uh, now, this was asking for approval to apply for the grants for South Carolina DHEC.
Okay.
Those grants are coming up, uh, in April.
Okay.
Um, historically, we have applied for those and been very successful in obtaining monies to help with our used oil program, our waste tires, and our solid waste recycling.
Okay, what, what kind of monies would we tend to get from that type of grant, do you think?
The oil has been very fluctuating, and it's really what we need. Uh, sometimes it's been up to 50,000, this past year, we only needed some, a minimal supply, so it was less than 10. Um, we're kind of looking at the solid waste grant coming up for 2023, and the fact that they're going to award two, uh, grants for 110,000 dollars towards composting, uh, programs. So that would fit right in with the initiative that we're trying to, to raise awareness for.
Motion for items 16, 17, and 18.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Gerald, uh, second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any further discussion? Any objection? Those stand approved, uh, without objection?
Did we do eight, nine, and 10 as well, I think, uh, in a previous vote that I missed and stepped away?
Yeah, I think we did, uh, I think we did those, and, I think so, Brian, if we didn't, I apologize.
I remember talking about it, but I don't remember voting on it.
I think, I think we did, but somebody let me know if we didn't.
We, we did.
Okay. Uh, okay, solid waste, uh, spring campaign.
Yep, so this one is Victoria Hoffman, um, our recycling coordinator, uh, this one I'm really excited about, hold on, Victoria. She's going to tell you about it, and she's, she's actually shot a video recently, uh, if anybody's seen it, uh, if not, she'll direct you to it, I'm sure, about composting, um, and she'll get into the nitty-gritty about it, but composting is, is a way for us to, uh, directly take, take, uh, waste out of the waste stream. So before it even gets to the landfill, we're taking it out. This is, this is a home use, and something that I'm really proud about, because I got, uh, one about a year ago, and before that, my family, we didn't, we didn't recycle weed and compost weed, we just, we were in the trash. Uh, so anyhow, it's opened my eyes immensely, uh, we, and I live in a different town, we have a big, I think, whatever, 96-gallon, I mean, the big, the, uh, trash receptacle, and we were filling up two of the, it comes twice a week, and we were filling it up full thing. Now we barely fill, because, and I completely attribute it to the composting, we barely fill it up one time a week, we still get the trash service twice a week, but it's, it's partially full every time it comes. Also, to the point where, uh, this weekend, we were, we were out of town, and I felt guilty not throwing my banana peel, uh, in the compost, they didn't have compost or anything. So, um, anyhow, before she gets started, this is, so you know what we're talking about, this is actually fresh compost from the house. Uh, I'll let you guys pat, touch and feel it, so you know what we're talking about, when, I mean, this is not nasty, muddy stuff, this is my bananas in, in Lindell Dryer, and, uh, mostly bananas and compost. So, anyways, Victoria, come tell us all about compost.
Hi, thanks so much for having me today. Um, I did, here a presentation, I'm not sure that it came through, um, so just a little bit of background, why I saw the waste and recycling, coming here to talk to you about composting, uh, so it's all about diverting waste, right? We have all these trees, you cut your grass, you rake your leaves, that's all material that can be diverted from the landfill into compost material, they call it black gold, it's really great for your plants. Um, and fiscal year 2021, Beaufort County spent over 200,000 dollars in managing yard debris. Uh, so this is potentially funds that we can save, um, from, um, sorry, this is potentially funds that we can save from actually managing this yard waste, we can compost it and create, uh, this really organic rich material. Um, so I did have a joke planned, telling you guys I came here for the science fair, but this is one of the bins, I know, we're not here for a science fair, uh, this is one of the bins that we do sell, uh, the price online is 50 dollars, if you compare that price, it could be upwards to 200 dollars.
Who's ready to want us to go?
Great, yeah, so this is the presentation, um, we can go ahead, uh, to the next slide, and I believe I already gave you some information, the background, so there's the figure, um, that we did spend in yard waste debris, uh, last year, and so this was, we have a separate container at our collection centers, and that material, uh, we have to pay to get rid of it, right? So that's our, our cost, and then another really great fact is that 30% of the waste that we do landfill in South Carolina is yard debris. Um, we don't really have numbers for food waste, but as Jared can attest to, when you start diverting it, you can really see it. Um, so this is the bin again, it's something that you can set up in your yard, and we do want you guys to have the opportunity, uh, to experience this, um, it's really changed, it really changes the way that you think about things when you start recycling, when you start diverting this waste, um, you can see these visual impacts, and then we can go on to the next slide. And we've already partnered with, um, Oldfield, you can see the compost bins in the back, this is their community garden, it's gorgeous, and now they're going to be able to have their own compost that they're making, people in their community, they're already, um, starting this process, uh, to get, we've got with them, they have the bins that we sell online, and I also presented a training, which is that going to be kicking off, um, next month at the local libraries, we call it the Green Step Series, um, this last month, we were talking about recycling, and now that we're getting into spring, um, it'll be our composting tutorial. And I'm not sure if we can, if the link is going to work, um, but we created this amazing tutorial, um, I cannot take the credit for, it was Jared's idea to get this. tutorial, I cannot take the credit for, it was Jared's idea to get this, and we, we kind of brought it to life. So Rob Lewis also, definitely have to mention him, because we all had a vision, we came together and created the tutorial. We are a food waste ambassador for South Carolina DHEC. I shared this tutorial with them, and then they featured Beaufort County as a food waste ambassador on their social media sites. So people are seeing this tutorial, they're really excited about it. We're going to be using this tutorial in green talks, we'll be going to schools and talking to people about it. And then also, I'm really excited to share with you that I've been asked to present this tutorial at the Carolina Recycling Association's Spring Conference next month. So we're making headwaves. Beaufort County, it's a beautiful place to live, and we're hoping to get on the map of sustainability, too. Is the link going to work? We can kind of show you a snippet, I know we're kind of crunched with time.
You're doing fine, you're doing fine.
I'm trying to talk fast. But if we can't show you the tutorial, that's fine, it really is a great resource. If you want a compost bin, we can come into contact with you and provide a bin for you, so you can adopt those practices at home and see for yourself how much waste you're diverting. I trust that everybody's recycling. And then also, you can go full circle and use your compost material in your gardens and on your lawn. I think that I can take a break now.
Joe?
If you have any questions.
Yes, did you say you are partnering, partnering with various communities?
So we did, we, we partnered with Oldfield.
Right.
We learned that they had a community garden, so we wanted to assist them in any way that we could. So they received compost bins, and then to encourage further facilitation of the composting process, we went in and trained their compost group, they have like a garden group, rather. So yes, it's something that I would like to get more into, contacting these Audubon communities, all the communities.
Hi, my name's Victoria Hoffman, and I'm the recycling coordinator for Beaufort County. Today, I'm going to provide a quick composting 101 tutorial. Composting is a great way to divert food and yard waste from landfills, and it's wonderful for your plants. A few reasons why we like to promote composting are, the EPA reported more than sixty-three million tons of food waste sent to landfills in 2018. In South Carolina, about thirty percent of waste taken to landfills is yard waste. Composting reduces material sent to landfills and reduces methane released into the atmosphere. So you may be wondering, what is composting? Composting is the breakdown of plant material through decomposition. This happens in nature, but at a slower process. Once the material breaks down, you're left with a nutrient-rich dirt-like material that you can apply to plants, your garden, or your lawn. Compost helps retain moisture in soil and reduces the amount of chemical fertilizers used in gardens. If you are interested in composting, Beaufort County has Earth Machine compost bins for sale for a great price of fifty dollars. You can find more information on purchasing one on our website. The bins are almost at a fifty percent discount of the normal price.
So you can see with the compost tutorial, it gives you information how to compost at home, and then of course, we have our flyer created by DHEC. And just a little background of information before I leave, in 2015, DHEC gave Beaufort County two hundred bins, and then we sold them to the public, and since 2015, when this first started, we've purchased two rounds of bins. So we're selling it at a low price, not to get a profit, but just to sustain the program so we can keep finding bins to provide to the community at low cost. I believe that is everything. Cindy, the last?
So comments and questions?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Alice?
Thank you. We've been composting for almost two generations, growing up on a farm, but thank you again for doing this, it's easy. I hope all county council members start composting. I like your challenge.
Thanks. It is, it is really easy, and once you start doing it, like Jared said, you feel bad for not putting that, I mean, even my kids, I've got a three-year-old, and she knows if it's gonna be composted, recycled, or trash. So really, just starting to create that mindset. So we're trying to just reach people and let them know about this great initiative, and then also, we're diverting waste. We all know that it costs a lot of money to dispose of our waste, so this is just something that we can do in hopes of saving that cost.
Eric?
Quick question, um, how many, how many bins do you recommend for households?
Um, depending on how much waste you create, we just have one bin, I think Jared, he has one bin, so just one per household. I do have people coming in, I want to say, in the last week, we've sold over twenty bins, and some people, most people get one. I have had a couple people want two. So it just depends on how much material that you need to compost, like if you have a bunch of leaves in your yard, you might need two, but really just one.
The compost that you, sample that you have, had, I mean have, how long did it take to get to that stage?
A couple months.
Okay.
It can be a really fast process, there's active composting and then passive, and we could go all day long about composting the different methods.
Got you, okay, thank you. Okay, other, I can't see who's online, but if somebody has a comment? Just two observations, I, I think the school kids are the ones that are most apt to tell their parents to go do it, so I think you could work with them. It also sounds like we will get savings back through the enterprise zone when this happens, so it always raises the question about promoting and whether we even discount them because we can get a payback, but I think it's kind of neat.
Glad you enjoyed it.
Thank you for sharing, good luck. Okay, Jared, I guess we're getting close to the end?
Yep. And I would take it a step further, I would challenge each, what kind of story would it be if all eleven council members had a compost at their house? So that's my challenge to y'all.
Oh, me, too.
I got one.
And use it, I will come to your house and, but it'd be nice that you use it if it goes to your house. We can get it to you, let us, just let myself or Victoria know, if you're interested, we'll get it to you. I told her to bring all eleven, but she didn't have room in her little car to bring them all. All right, so the next item, let's see what?
Number twenty.
Number twenty.
Eminent domain?
Yep, so this is back to sales tax. So this is pathway along Bluffton Parkway, right near the circle, there's a gap from the circle, just almost up to our Myrtle Park Center on the opposite side of the road that we're missing. So it's a couple hundred feet, we've been working on this project design and coordinating with the property owner for quite a while. We went through the appraisal process in, in coordination with the Uniform Relocation Act, as we're required to per our IGA with DOT. And then we got to a stale point as far as what, the appraisal came back in, was just over forty thousand dollars, and the owner was willing about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So to say we were a little off is just an understatement. Anyhow, so this is the next order of business, after we get to the point where we can't negotiate. Actually, the owner told us that he wanted us to pursue eminent domain, so that was his counteroffer. Since then, we haven't had any more communication, and he said to coordinate with his attorney. So we are doing just that with this recommendation to take these two parcels through the eminent domain process, so we can make good on this pathway to install there on Bluffton Parkway.
Okay, motion?
So move.
Paul moves, second?
Second.
Joe seconds. Any further discussion on that, or questions for Jared? Sounds like there's agreement to go eminent domain route. Is there any objection to this? Seeing no objection, this stands approved. The next three are appointments, we got Paul Manning to the County Transportation Committee, we have a reappointment of Barbara Childs to the Low Country Regional Transportation Authority, and we have a appointment of Brenda McPhee to the Keep Beaufort County Board. The first and third require just six votes. I think Barbara, which would be a reappointment, would require ten, if I understand, so I'm gonna take twenty-one and twenty-three first. Is there any objection to the appointment of those two individuals to their first term?
I'll motion that.
I'll second that, sir.
Okay. Any objection? Okay, those two stand appointments, move on to council, is approved. Let me come back to twenty-two being a reappointment. I may need something from legal on this, as to whether it requires a ten actual votes of council, but I do think under any circumstance, we can move it forward to council for the final vote.
It is ten.
Pardon me?
It is ten.
It is ten, okay. So I think what we do is, is there a motion to send this on to council, recognizing that it will require ten votes?
You move.
Second.
Okay, any objection? Okay, we stand approved. For my write-up, let me wrap up, let me just cover one brief item, if you can pull that up, and it relates a little bit to what Eric was talking about on two seventy-eight. And just as background, so he's pulling that up, you know, it's, I think we've all followed what's been going on with DOT, and to some extent, what's been going on with the town of Hilton Head, and back some time ago, you know, we initiated the independent review, which I think was helpful. We also initiated, although the town never used it, the, the concept of, of our participating financially with the land planning exercise. So very, and go to the second page if you would, the very recently, well, the, their land planners came up with twenty-six recommendations, those recommendations went to DOT, DOT came back fairly recently, and I'm sure these will be talked about somewhat in the public hearing that was mentioned, but this is just my take on it, as of bringing it up to speed. Essentially, nineteen of the items, as I kind of read through the responses, kind of fell in the category of DOT more or less agrees with it, it's not a, not a significant financial piece, it's the kind of thing that'll get folded into the design as it, as it goes forward. There's one or two things in there that DOT, you know, rejected out of hand, and there's one or two that were actually turned down, and the only one we've been involved in was item number fifteen, which was the concept of having two bridges, but that's about a thirty million dollar cost, and I think we, when we talked about it as a group. So I, I see those nineteen as, as not really big issues, but call them to your attention, and when you read the detail, you may, you may view it differently. If we go to the first page, and these are the remaining seven items, and they're repeated on both sides of the page, but just sorted differently, and to Eric's point, the ones on the right side at the top are the ones that appear to have some kind of a cost impact. You can read them, but basically, my sense was the DOT didn't necessarily disagree with these, but they kind of fell in the category of some kind of local funding, whether it be the county, or the town, or, or both of us. And what, what I would view would tend to happen is that as these dollars get more or less finalized, we'd be in a conversation with the town about whether these do or don't make sense to get funded locally. And it comes back to Eric's point about whether we should potentially consider using some of the surplus from the sales tax to help cover this cost. So anyway, I just bring this to your attention, it's kind of my sort on where we are, but I think we're making pretty good progress, and some of the community angst, I think, is starting to fall by the wayside. That was all I had. Any, okay, we have a need to go into the executive session, so I will need a motion to go into executive session to receive, to talk about the MC Riley pool.
Just, just so council knows, we will not need, have any action out that's come out of, out of the executive session. So those that are in the room can feel free to leave.
Okay. Paul moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Joe seconds. An objection? Without objection, we'll go into executive session, and as Eric said, we don't anticipate.